Good afternoon, Mayor and members of council. Our first briefing today is Jail and Reentry Service Coordination Pathway. It deals with mental illnesses and the intake of our inmates at our jail. I have Eileen Smith, the Director of Human Services, and Angela Hicks, the Deputy Director for Behavioral Health and Development Services. And they have a number of coworkers and the sheriff's contingent that they're going to introduce for us.
Hi. Thank you very much, Mayor, City Council, Mr. Leahy. Today, I have brought with me Angie Hicks. She has just been recently appointed to the position of Behavioral Health Developmental Services Deputy Director, which means she's over all of the CSB services for our agency. Our board chair is here to support us, Dr. Joyce Harvey, and Dr. Kevin Cuffey, who is helping with the program. He supervises it. He's been in the jail for this past month, which is our first month with this program, and he's had a lot of great experience there. We are doing quite a bit of business. Over here, we have Deputy Chief Thompson and Captain Bart, who are here also. Oh, and I also see, who I report to, Deputy City Manager, Dr. Ken Chandler. Okay, so today, we want to talk to you a little bit about what's happening with our new program. The first slide, though, I'm going to talk to you just a bit about challenges that are occurring across the nation. So, across the nation, the population of individuals or the group of individuals with mental health issues that are entering our jails is at a monumental rate. I'm sure that you've read, if you've read anywhere in the national news, you see that this issue across the country has become an epidemic where over 2 million people are entering our jail systems. In Virginia Beach, we have an average of 1,630 inmates, and about 26% of those are prescribed medications for mental health conditions. Okay, so let me talk a little bit about the timeline and how this program came to be. Back in 2014, we started a discussion, and we started it with our Sheriff Stolli, as well as Captain Bart and Deputy Chief Thompson, as well as our undersheriff, who's Brian Struzieri, about the issues that they were seeing in our jail. The amount of people that were coming through. We were serving the seriously mentally ill populations. We were only serving a small contingent of everybody that was coming into the jail. So, we started talking about what do we need to do differently in this city to address this? And one of the things that came up was screening, and how can we screen everyone who's coming through? So, from 2015 to 2018, without any additional funding, we pretty much tripled our numbers because we started to move some of our positions and some of the things that we were doing under Dr. Cuffey into doing a little bit more services in the jail, just to assess where we were. So, from 2015, we probably served about 230 people in the jail. We went up to about 685 by 2018. So, we knew that we could support this program. We knew we had a need for it, and that is why we, in talks with the sheriff, kept progressing through, what is it that we need to do in terms of funding? So, we did also, in terms of how the sheriff was approaching the legislators, give him some talking points about mental health in general, but also looked specifically at what was occurring with our jail, what was occurring with the CSB, which is under the Department of Human Services. So, in 2019 is when we received almost $1 million, about $916,000 to start this program. And on July 9th is when it was appropriated through the City Council, and you approved an ordinance. So, the ordinance was for 12 positions. The 12 positions that we have, three are going to be community-based clinicians. Those clinicians are going to divert. We already do a lot of diversion through our emergency services, but this is an increase in that. This is trying to find who may be coming in and out of the jail more frequently, trying to do some outreach, and meet them where they are, so to speak, so that they don't go back into the jail, or they don't go in the jail in the first place. We already hired our team leader, Ms. Valita Hall. She is dynamic, excellent. We're very pleased with her jumping right in and helping with Dr. Cuffey, who has started this off. We've hired three of the six jail-based clinicians, three more, we are thinking, will be hired in January, and then the two forensic peer specialists, we'll probably hire those by February. The funding has also assisted us with some expenses that we have, where we have a office now right in the jail. We needed computers, we needed cell phones, we needed things like that, so we could communicate. So, some of the funding went to that. The next slide is where I'm going to turn this presentation over to Angie. She's going to talk a little bit more about the details of what this is right here, which is called the Sequential Intercept Model. This is what we based our proposal off of, that we received funding for, and then a little bit about what we're doing specifically in Virginia Beach. So, I'm going to invite her up to the podium at this point.
Eileen? It's so nice to be here and have the opportunity to talk about this important initiative with all of you. First, I just really have to say, we couldn't ask for better partners than the sheriff and his whole leadership team. They have been instrumental in helping us to better serve the people with mental illness in the jail. So, I just, in case I forget later, had to make sure I added that. We based our model off of some philosophies that are related to the Sequential Intercept Model, which is basically a national approach to addressing people with mental illness who are ending up recidivating and going into jails. So, we have our model that's based on three core dimensions: diversion, preparation, and successful reentry. So, our model hopes to prevent people from ever getting to jail and to prepare them for leaving when they do. So, there are six phases in our coordinated pathway, and I'm going to take you through each of those individually. Diversion. Eileen hit on this, and it is a critical focal point for us. We have three crisis intervention clinicians. They're going to be meeting people where they're at in the community to help prevent them from being arrested. That's our goal. We are going to be stationing these workers at Pembroke 6, where our same-day access clinic is, and there are days when that clinic can be like a psychiatric emergency room. So, we will have those crisis intervention workers placed there, so they can immediately respond to resolve the crisis. We will also have them located at our Magic Hollow Campus, where we treat people with the most seriously mentally ill conditions. We will be advocating for diversion during pre-booking and arraignment. And of course, we already have several services in the city, such as our CIT program, the new mobile co-responder team, and the same-day access clinic. For the initial screening, we will have staff in the jail seven days a week, and we will provide evidence-based screening to everyone who comes in and agrees to it. So, that is something to point out. It is a voluntary process. We can't force people to participate in the assessment. But we will be there every day to screen folks within 24 hours of them arriving inside the jail. We will be advocating for appropriate psychiatric treatment, and we will be alerting jail staff anytime we notice any high-risk situations or acute psychiatric needs, so that they are addressed immediately upon entry. Next is the initial planning. This is where we gather additional information about their history, and we develop an initial treatment plan. We start thinking immediately about what will the person need to successfully re-enter the community. If we wait till the last minute, when they actually are ready to come out, it's too late. So, we will start that process within three days of them coming into the jail. We'll be talking about things like housing, medical care, benefits, do they have an ID? We'll be looking at all of those things very quickly. Under the treatment and reentry coordination, this is where our clinicians are going to be meeting with folks every week to monitor their condition. Symptoms change. It could be that some people come into the jail, and we don't initially notice that they are symptomatic or have a mental illness. That may appear weeks later. So, our clinicians are going to be there monitoring folks every week to see if their conditions change. They're also going to be doing educational groups, and they're going to be doing a housing risk assessment, so that we know they have a safe place to go when they re-enter the community. We also are going to have peer specialists that engage with people to enhance their motivation. Peers have lived experience, and they can relate to people and connect with them in a way that a clinical professional cannot. And so, it's an integral part of our program. Another important piece is that we will have daily huddles between our staff, the jail staff, and the jail medical team. And this is important to make sure that everyone is on the same page regarding the services, and it truly will enhance our continuity of care. Next, active reentry. This occurs 90 days prior to release. If they're in the jail for a long period of time, then we start looking at becoming active with our engagement 90 days prior to them transitioning out. So, we're scheduling appointments. We're helping them with activating their benefits. We're ensuring an adequate supply of medication, developing a safety plan, depending on what led them into jail. What can we do differently? What changes can we create in their environment to prevent recidivism? We'll be bringing natural supports into the conversation. There are a lot of times when family members don't understand how to help their loved ones. And so, if we don't involve them in those conversations, there's a good likelihood that people can re-enter the community right back into the same circumstances that got them there. So, we'll be bringing them into those conversations to try to develop a plan. During community transition, this is an important phase for us. This is where we will be actively linking people to services. So, it will not be you have an appointment and give them a list, and here you go. It is going to be an active involvement, a warm handoff, if you will, to make sure that people get where they need to go. We will be looking at basic needs that we all take for granted sometimes, whether they have medications, whether they have a safe place to live. We're going to be making sure they actually get there when they're released. And this will be, in most circumstances, on the day they're released. So, that is a tremendous change. We haven't always been able to do that in the past, because we haven't had the resources. But this program allows us to do that. In addition, we are going to have a high level of communication with probation officers and community corrections, all with the goal of preventing recidivism. And our outcomes, this is what we're very excited about. And I hope that when we give you an update, six months, a year from now, whenever you would like it, I hope that by then, we have people who can actually testify to, not here, but be able to give testimonial about the change that this program made in their lives, what a difference it made. They were on a cycle, on a path in their life that wasn't working, and this helped them turn things around, get a job, get a place to live, re-engage with their community relationships like they had not been able to do before. So, we're really excited about that, because that's the outcome we're really, really hoping to see. But we also have struggled to have real data. How can we make informed decisions without real data? And this program will allow us to have accurate information. It will allow us to hopefully lower incarceration rates for people who are seen by a crisis intervention worker. We are certainly hoping for decreased recidivism. We know that the rate is too high, and people with these illnesses don't belong in the jail. So, we are certainly hoping that we'll see that recidivism rate drop. We are hoping for a higher rate of engagement in behavioral health services, and enhance coordination of services with the jail staff through those daily meetings. And in terms of where we are with the implementation, I am thrilled to say that we went live November 1st. A lot of preparation went into that, and Eileen mentioned several things that had to occur for us to get where we are. A lot of kudos goes to Dr. Cuffey and his team. We had to go through a lot of steps to be able to do these services. So, we gained a licensure from the Department of Behavioral Health. We drafted a memorandum of agreement between the sheriff's office and the Department of Human Services. The jail was gracious enough to renovate some space inside the jail, so I'm happy to say that we are fully integrated. We don't just come and go anymore. We are actually co-located inside the jail. And that means a lot, because it means that we are actually working together, the same people, and this is holistic, the same folks who put people in the jail, are serving them in the jail, and then serving them when they come out. So, there's a collective approach that will really make a difference. And, in case you're curious, we've been seeing approximately 40 people per week, which is higher than we had anticipated. So, we are ready for anything, and we hope to make this a tremendous success for our community. So, I'm open to any questions that you may have.
Mr. Berlucci, Mr. Wood, then Aaron.
Well, I want to thank you very much for being here, and to everyone from the Human Services Department team, as well as the team from the sheriff's office, for sharing this presentation and for the work that you're doing, which I think is incredibly innovative and reflects the compassion that exists here in Virginia Beach as well. But for those who are watching at home, or who may be less familiar with the mental health crisis, which is a national epidemic, and the impacts are being experienced here in Virginia Beach, I took the liberty of going on to do some research from the organization called NAMI, which is the National Alliance of Mental Illness. I just want to share a few points, make some comments, then ask a question, that it will help illustrate why this is so important. Because people who are experiencing a mental health crisis are more likely to encounter police than they are to get the help they need. And a vast majority of those individuals who do encounter police are not violent criminals. But once they're in jail, they often don't receive the treatment that they need in order to get better, and in fact, they end up getting worse, and they're themselves at risk of greater victimization while incarcerated. This is a national report. And then, after leaving the jail, of course, many of those individuals no longer have access, or never had access, to the care they need, and the criminal record they have makes it difficult to obtain jobs and housing, which leads to a very destructive cycle, which many people who are incarcerated are trapped in, which ultimately would lead to an almost 100% recidivism rate. And I've heard our sheriff talk about this many times, that people who have mental illness are often trapped in the criminal justice system for their entirety of their lives. And the fact that your department, and in partnership with the sheriff's office, are leading this initiative, is exceedingly innovative, and it really speaks to the strength of our community and compassion, as I noted before. But ultimately, I do view there's a connection between public safety and mental health services. It's not the only part of the mental health problem that we have to address, but this is one important part. And I think improving these services within the jails will make our community safer, and they'll help empower people who suffer from mental illness, who are trapped in this cycle that I referenced. It's really important that we improve the access and delivery of mental health services and reduce the stigma that's associated with receiving mental health services, and just as you're doing here, that we continue to work with law enforcement professionals, city departments, community organizations and nonprofits, as well as healthcare professionals, to bring everyone together to improve the access and delivery of those services. And also, one thing that wasn't noted here, or made slight reference, was the crisis intervention team. So, hopefully, our police officers, when they encounter a person with mental illness, can help direct that individual to the services they need, so they don't end up trapped in that cycle. For those who are trapped, it's extraordinarily bad, and it impacts the course of their lives. So, I guess my question is, leading to my question finally, this is a great, it's a great program, and for those who have access to this program, it will potentially change the trajectory of their lives. But I guess, stepping out of this particular program with the jails, what are your thoughts on how we could avoid a person coming into contact with the criminal justice system in the first place? We know that there's a need once they're there, but how could the city? I mean, one answer is increased funding at the statewide level, and this council has made that request of the General Assembly. But is there anything that we can do in the city without the General Assembly? I know you're doing great work, and we'd love to hear more about that later, but how can we avoid that first encounter by improving services?
I think we're already doing some of it, actually. We have a ways to go, as you said, but we started a same-day access clinic this year. And I think a key piece of that is rapid access to behavioral health care. So, people having access to meet their basic needs and also to treat their illnesses early and break down those barriers is critical. And so, we've done some of that, but the awareness piece, I think, is huge as well. We talked to so many people who just don't know where to turn to for help. So, we need to do a better job of doing awareness campaigns to get the word out there. I know Channel 13 recently has done some documentaries, and they're working on one now, about mental health care, and "What Should People Know?" is what they're calling it. What do people need to know about how to get help? So, if we increase awareness, so people know how to get help, and we provide it without barriers, then I think that goes a long way.
And could I just, just one follow-up question? I think that we're very, very lucky that our sheriff is willing to participate in this program, is really leading this on a statewide and national level. And I think this is a program and a partnership that we should all be very proud of and grateful for. And just to emphasize that point, is this happening anywhere else in the Commonwealth?
Not that I'm aware of. No, sir.
So, it's really, should be a source of pride for Virginia Beach and for our community, that this is occurring, that we're approaching our, you know, these policies with compassion and kindness, and that people who suffer from mental illness are sick, and we should treat them with the same sort of care and medical professionalism that we do other types of illnesses.
We are hoping, through monitoring this program, that we will demonstrate it as a model for the state. That's what we're hoping. And we're going to be tracking the outcomes throughout the entire time that it's operational to be able to support exactly what you just said.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Jim, then Aaron.
Thanks. I just had a syntax question, I guess. Slides five, six, and seven, you referred to diversion. You're diverting people from where to where? That's all I need to know.
We are diverting people with a mental illness from going to jail. So, a lot of times, what happens is people have untreated mental illness and substance use conditions, and they end up being picked up by law enforcement. And so, they end up in jail, which is not where they belong. It could be minor charges, misdemeanors, trespassing, things like that, drunk in public, and they end up in jail. And the jail, as the sheriff would say himself if he's here, is not a mental health clinic, not a mental health institution. So, our goal is through the crisis intervention team with our police, and through our crisis intervention new services through this project, that we will be able to do early intervention and prevent them from coming into contact with law enforcement. And if they do, then we have them evaluated and hopefully get them into a hospital or other level of care, rather than jail.
So, it's dependent upon having some sort of residential treatment facility, or at least some sort of aggressive treatment facility that's available, so you can divert them from jail based on a reasonably minor offense, so that they can get the treatment?
Yes, and we have emergency services clinicians that do a thorough assessment of the individual at the time, and then they make a determination whether or not they need the highest level of care, which would be an inpatient facility, like Virginia Beach Psychiatric Center, or Virginia Beach General's Inpatient Psychiatric Unit. And they could go there under a TDO, if they're not voluntary at that time, but they'll still get the care they need, and they'll be safe. Or if their risk is not that high, they may be referred to a crisis unit in the community, which is a residential voluntary placement. Or they may be, you know, sent to same-day access to receive outpatient care with a safety plan in place. So, it varies. It's very individualized, based on the circumstances that the individual is in at the time. Our emergency services clinicians are certified by the state, and they are well-trained, not only in the assessment process and determination of level of care, but also the community resources that are available.
Thank you.
Okay, Aaron.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, sir.
Again, I want to add, of course, some of the sentiments. My colleague Berlucci said, I think it is a great partnership between the sheriff's office and our city, as well as I've had the opportunity to visit through a court and see the graduates there. And I think it's a very, very important program that we, as a council and city, should look into and invest in more to expand that, on that program as well. My question is along the lines of the criminal record and mental health records. Are they, do they stay with the inmate once they're released? Like, how does an inmate, or, you know, someone who comes into contact with your office or program, how do, does those records follow their criminal record?
For adults, they do.
They do?
Yeah. There are certain, there are other innovative programs nationally, particularly geared toward juveniles, that will bring a person into treatment, and if they complete that treatment, then that record, and I'm not a lawyer, so esponged or something like that, but then it wouldn't interfere and follow them and prevent them from achieving their goals.
Because I asked that question in the part, you said a couple of things earlier about basic needs, housing, food, medication. But one of the most important things to think about as well is job. And although there may not be your particular focus, I think that's something of helping those individuals who necessarily get out of jail, or may have mental illness as well, even though you're finding the health and treatment they need, but also finding employment, so that we aren't creating or increasing the homeless population, an independent population on the side of one that's dependent upon the rest of civilization to continually provide them food and housing and things of this nature. So, making them independent is something I think is extremely important as well, not to mention, make sure they are becoming productive members of our society. So, I'm interested into how does your program try and connect and find those with jobs if they aren't eligible for benefits? DARS is eligible for benefits, so I know a lot of them aren't, but some of them are. And so, how does your program work with that in that aspect?
Well, it's part of the assessment that we do to gauge their motivation and their goal-setting around employment. So, first, we make sure they're ready, because there's nothing worse than someone trying and then failing again and again, and it starts to affect their self-confidence. So, we make sure their symptoms are under control, substance use is under control, and they're receiving treatment for it, and they're ready. And if they are ready, we work with certain organizations in the community, like DARS, the Department of Aging and Rehabilitative Services. They help with job coaching. They will help an individual practice for interviews, teach them how to dress for an interview, and get them some skills. They can even help with GEDs and skills classes, things like that. So, we don't help directly with job placement, but we link them to organizations that do.
And I think it will be, you know, coming upon us to look at, in the privacy, at the organizations who are looking for these partnerships as well, because I'm familiar with the Priority dealership in Norfolk, where they have inmates, and they actually train them and educate them as well, to go right into the workforce and actually hire them. So, I know we have a workforce need that we hear in our community, but this is another avenue that we can utilize, especially for those who may have to improve their mental health, but also those who are just leaving jail and not having that recidivism by providing them actually on work to have an income to sustain themselves.
Yes.
And so, this is one of the ways I'd like to talk to you further, and see if we can build partnerships throughout the community and the Hampton Roads region to making sure we aren't just treating those with mental illness, but we're also helping them, provide them with suitable jobs that suit their needs.
Yes, sir. That sounds very exciting. Thank you, and thank you for the lead with Priority. I've made a note. We also, through one of our day programs, that's really geared toward social interaction improvement and getting people ready to work, there is an employment program in there for people with the most serious illnesses, and they actually get to practice work. There is a kitchen where they help prepare meals and learn how to serve and practice basic skills, and there's an office environment where they practice filing, answering the phone, some of those things. So, we do have an internal resource for people with serious mental illness, but some of the folks we're seeing in the jail wouldn't fit that category. But some of the folks we're seeing in the jail wouldn't fit that category. So what we're really striving to do is develop a program that is flexible and can be designed to meet a diversity of needs. Because that's what we're seeing, is a diversity of folks coming into the jail. And they all have different needs. So that's our challenge, is to figure out how we meet those.
Well, you can count me in. I'm, I'm, I wanted to help any way I can.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, anybody else? Sabrina.
So I want to say thank you for the presentation, as well as your staff. As has already been mentioned, it is definitely a critical program that's at work in our city, and we definitely need it. I'd also like to echo your sentiments regarding Sheriff Staley and his leadership team. Because when I visited the jail, I saw the difference that his leadership makes inside the jail with the inmates and how it's actually helping them within the system, though they are not supposed to be there. So it's, it's very comforting and it's hopeful, you know, to see all the work that's taking place. I certainly commend you all for what you're doing. My questions are focused more so on homelessness. How does the department focus or help people who are homeless with mental health issues? Because it's my understanding that quite a few of the homeless population encounters with them. There are some who have mental health concerns and need assistance as well. What is your experience in dealing with the homeless population and their needs regarding this matter?
Thank you for that question, because housing is something we don't have enough of. Safe, affordable housing is something we don't have enough of. But we are making some strides with resources with the opening of the homeless or Housing Resource Center. That has been helpful on a number of levels, not just for the shelter beds and the permanent housing, but the services they provide there. We've also received some state funding for permanent supportive housing. And that's important, because the, the, the environment has shifted from a climate of transitional housing, which is just temporary for people, to recognizing that permanency is so important for individuals. So over the last few years, we have received 70 slots and they are full. They fill up quickly. We're hoping that we'll have additional opportunities in the future for more state funding to support housing. But it's, it's a challenge. And sometimes for people coming out of jail, and this is the worst-case scenario, but if they have burned all of their bridges, and some do, before they have a chance to get better and rebuild those bridges, they go through a tough time. And that's the reality of it. And so we have to look at, what does the individual want? What type of support do they need? And try to find a resource that works for them.
Well, thank you. I'm very hopeful in the future with the work that everyone's doing that we'll be able to overcome that challenge.
I hope so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? You know, thank you very much for your great work on a very, very needed project. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Well, Mayor and Council, with your permission, Councilwoman Henley is tending to a very important personal matter, and she's going to be a little late, so she asked that we rearrange items B and C and that we go now that we would have our presentation on Indian River Kempstil Road project.
That'd be fine, and Ms. Abbott is also running behind, because she will be here.
Hey, Mr. Rousey.
Thank you.
And so I have David Jarman, who is our Transportation Division Manager from Public Works, Phil Pullen, our city engineer, Rick Lowman, our traffic engineer.
Jessica Blackburn.
Jessica Blackburn, sorry. Project manager, and Phil Ketter, the operations manager. Sorry, Jessica.
All right. Members of council, thank you for giving us the opportunity to come and give you an update today on the Indian River Kempstil Road Intersection Improvement Project. I'm going to tag-team this with Rick Lowman today. We wanted to kind of walk through the project status to give you an update of where we are, talk about what happened a few weeks ago. We got some, some feedback from folks on that. And we also wanted to maybe step back and give you a little bit of history and kind of talk about how we got to where we are today, because there's obviously some new faces on council and some folks who probably want a little explanation on how we got here. So we'll start off with the, with the location map. I think most everybody's familiar with that. Just gives you an idea of the proximity to Interstate 64. And Indian River, of course, is a very congested corridor. Next slide. This is the most congested intersection in the city. I'll give you some numbers there in a second. But with that come access and commuter issues, access to the businesses, and just commuters trying to get through the intersection on a daily basis. If you've been through there, it's pretty self-explanatory. Next slide. Project constraints. So this is kind of what we were dealing with when we were looking at what to do about the problem we have here. There's 106,000 cars a day roughly that go through that intersection. So that, that gives us a level of service F. And I, a little bit jokingly put F minus, there's no such thing as an F minus. But if you could give it a grade, it would be like double, triple F minus. It's, it's a really bad level of service F. There are commercial businesses on every quadrant. Obviously, if you've been out there, you've seen that as well. And that trickles, trickles into right-of-way impacts, because generally the first thing we're going to do when we start widening is add lanes, and we're going to hit parking lots. And once we do that, we start taking away parking. We have damages to businesses. In some cases, you have to take the business itself because of loss of parking. So it's something we try to be very aware of when we're doing a major project like this. And certainly with a big project, the larger it gets, there's more undergrounding work with storm pipes, with underground utilities. It just kind of snowballs based on the size of the job. And certainly for schedule, with the number of cars going through this intersection, we, the, the community and, and just the city in general really wouldn't have the tolerance for an extended construction project. So we wanted to talk about doing something different here. And so with that, next slide, kind of helps define our project limits. So at this point, I'm going to let Rick Lowman kind of walk through a little bit of how we vetted this and the history of how we got through our decision-making process. Thank you, Dave. Back in 2007, we took a look at this, we took a look at intersections all over the city, and we said Kempstil and Indian River is the most congested intersection in the city by far. So back then, we decided to start to make plans to how to fix this intersection. So, so there's the, a project, approximate project limits that, that Dave was talking about. So next slide. All right, so really, there's three things that we could have done back then, traditional ways of fixing this intersection. The first would have been to, to do a grade-separated interchange. And if you've been to Virginia Beach Boulevard and Military Highway, one road goes over top of the other road. It free flows across the other road. But underneath, you have all your conflicts and your movements, and you do have feeder roads on the outside. That's very, very costly, because there's a lot of bridge structure involved in that. It also wipes out businesses on both sides of it, because you are taking a lot of right-of-way. You're widening pretty much both, both approaches to the intersection there. And if you can, if you go out to, to that intersection there, you'll see that most of the businesses are not there anymore, that once were there, that lined Military Highway. So the second option would be to add lanes at grade. This is the typical way that you improve an intersection. Again, this is going to be less expensive than grade-separated, because there's not as much structure. But there's a potential for more right-of-way impacts, because the project, it, when you widen in all four quadrants, it would take away businesses. It would take away parking, which would be damages to businesses. And ultimately, those businesses would be lost. And also, when you do a project like that, you extend the limits out more, because you've got to taper these improvements back. You've got to move the bottlenecks a little bit further away from the intersection. So you do bottleneck it again. The third option, which we really didn't consider, was no bill, just leave it as it is. Because again, this really was our problem child, or one of them. So we decided to take a innovative approach to the problem. So we decided to, to take a look at an innovative approach or a non-traditional improvement. And we'll show you what that means here in a few minutes. But it, are, the benefits of it, minimize the overall footprint of the project. As you can see, as you've been out there, there aren't any business takes. There, there are two property takes, but for the most part, all the businesses are there, and we didn't infringe into the parking areas. So it saved right-of-way costs, right-of-way acquisition costs. It saves time and money. The time portion of it, if you take a look at an intersection like Princess Anne, Kempstil, Wichita, which we improved recently, that project took four years. This project, Kempstil and Indian River is going to be done in 21 months, under 21 months. And as you can see, the price tag is much less. I don't want to go back to those slides there, but the dollar figures that we showed you, the 60 million and the, and the 37 million, those were in $2,010. So we have estimated that, that grade-separated interchange would cost about $100 million now. And just lane additions would cost $60 million. So for $23 million, you know, we are, you know, fixing this intersection. So, and finally, the benefit is it, it does reduce the number of phases at the intersection from four phases to two phases. Whereas before, we had the left turns and then the thrus, and then the left turns and then the thrus. This is simple, a simple two-phase. So Indian River goes and then Kempstil goes. And it's made this intersection a lot safer as well. It's taken away conflicts that once existed between the left turners and the through vehicles. We've gotten rid of those conflicts entirely. They're all through vehicles now. The risks, obviously, it's something different. That's why we're here. People, and it links down to the third bullet, driver expectations. This doesn't, you know, it's not natural for the drivers. And that's why signage and people getting used to this. And that's why the video that we put out is even more important on this intersection, is because it's going to take a little while to get used to. But once you follow the signage, it's intuitive. And the last risk is, is more reliance on technology. And Dave will go into that, you know, when things go wrong, as they did during construction back at the end of October, you'll see extra delays, but we have fixed those. So how the decision was made? We considered 12 different options for innovative intersections. We modeled them all. We did very high-level modeling to figure out which options we could, you know, do further modeling on. And we came down to the hybrid option that we've chosen. Again, a hybrid, because there's two different non-traditional improvements that we put at this intersection. We vetted it with city leadership, city council. This was back in the 2009, 2010 timeframe. Because there was state and federal money on this project, we also had this vetted through VDOT and through the Federal Highway Administration. And they all came back and approved this project and said, this project does have merit, and, and this will, this will be a good project for that intersection. And again, to compare it to Princess Anne and Kempstil, which was recently completed, and this was done by a traditional approach. It cost $90 million, and 45 million of that was in right-of-way acquisition for the taking of businesses and property out there. And again, it was a four-year construction schedule. So I know you guys all got complaints for those four years that, you know, when is this going to be done? Well, we've gotten this project done in less than 21 months. So here's kind of an overview, and, and we have a video. Again, the video is shown, is on the internet. It's a YouTube video. But what this shows you is, is the approach that we took. Indian River Road goes across your screen, and Kempstil Road goes up and down on your screen. It's a combination of, you know, continuous flow intersection, a continuous flow intersection over here for the, for the left turns. They actually cross over. They also cross over to the other side of the road. And so everybody gets to go at once when the light goes green on Kempstil Road. And on Indian River, instead of making a left turn at the intersection, you go and make a U-turn and come back and make a right. Those are called Michigan lefts, because you do find those predominantly in Michigan. So as I talked about before, it minimizes the right-of-way costs and it maximizes the traffic flow, because it, again, it does reduce the intersection from four phases down to two. And, and by doing that, we've taken the cycle length, which is the time it takes from the beginning of the green to the beginning of the green. We've taken that from 180 seconds down to 70 seconds, which means it's a lot snappier and the drivers are going to be getting through the intersection a lot quicker, which has also caused some, some problems out there in the interim. So, Dave? Thanks, Rick. So, so Rick, Rick kind of hit on a little bit. I was going to just mention that this, this project was kind of born out of the Princess Anne-Kempstil project, because that was such a behemoth of a job, cost and impact. I know we sat in this room, I think, with City Manager Spoor at the time, and he said, we got to do something different, guys. We got to come up with, with something different, so we don't repeat this or have something that, that is this big of a project. Not that we can't do it, but it's just a lot of impact. And so this, that was one of the, the things that came out of that conversation. But you can see the project scheduling budget, as we mentioned here. It's about 23, a little over $23 million is where we are today. We're right at the end. And we've got about $19.9 million in state and federal money on the job. So, and again, the schedule was, was pretty compact for construction for a job of this size. So, next slide. So where are we right now? We, we finished the major roadwork. We're working to tie in the signal detectors and controllers, which is kind of a key point here, is the signal's operating on timings alone. So there's no, there's no signal detection. All that stuff's not in place yet. So again, that's another efficiency that we hope to experience once all that comes online. So we're, we're trying to work on that now and get that completed. And the anticipated completion date right now is in January of 2020. So we're quickly getting towards that at this point. It looks like we're, we're going to, we're going to meet that. The contract date is March, by the way, so we're, we're ahead of that. So let's go, go to the next slide. So this is a question we kind of wanted to talk about today, is what happened on October 31st? That's a big question everyone's had. One of the things that happened then, the contractor had finished the lane work on Kempstil Road. So we were ready to open those displaced lefts and make use of that efficiency. However, when they opened the, the Kempstil Road lanes, they used some old timings, some erroneous timings for the signals. Normally, on a regular intersection, you might be able to get away with that and not have a huge impact. In an intersection of this type, it's much more, it's much more sensitive to signal timings. Everything has to work together right. And so because there were wrong timings in there, it caused a lot of problems with delay. And I want to stress that there was, there was never a safety issue there. It was really just an efficiency issue, how fast we move cars through the intersection. So that was a big problem. We were working on the ultimate signal timings, what we have in place, but they were not ready to be deployed yet. So that's the problem we had. We needed the information, we didn't have it yet, and that was the hang-up. So what was the city's response? Next slide there. Our response was, we got everyone around the table real quick and said, what do we need to do to get this resolved? We talked about closing the lanes on Kempstil Road, but we decided we just opened it up and, and kind of gave the public the, the use of that. We didn't want to take it away, that would be a little bit confusing. So what we decided to do was, let's try to dive in here and make some adjustments on the signal timings. Sounds easy enough. Again, not a typical intersection. I believe on this one, if I wrote my numbers down, Rick, correct me. There's, there's one cabinet, there's five signals, and there's like 16 subroutines that are running to make this work. So you're telling somebody, just go out there and make an adjustment, you know, who, who wants to do that? I don't want to be the guy to make those adjustments. I want somebody who knows what they're doing. So that's what we were wrestling with then. So we tried to get the right signal timings, get the right people to, to make the adjustments. So we, we made some adjustments, continued to monitor and make incremental adjustments. We saw some real big improvement by November 6th, and, and think we had a good handle on that. Since then, next steps? We've deployed the ultimate timing, the ultimate signal timings. They were deployed last week. Things seem to be working much more efficiently. If you've been out there, much better. So some of the next steps is we need to finish the detection that I mentioned and the controllers. That's going to be done here in the next two or three weeks. We're also re-timing the signals from Interstate 64 down to Kempstil Indian River to make use of the, the revised signal timings along the corridor and improve some efficiencies corridor-wide. And again, our target completion is January 2020 at this point, with the contract in March. We've got a video I want to show you. Just real quick, though, I just want to make a couple of observations that we've seen so far. We've noticed that Kempstil Road is flowing very well. We may be able to pull some green time off Kempstil and put it on Indian River, which is what we need, especially during the PM peak. So that, that's a very good outcome. We've noticed that the PM peak is, I think, recovering much quicker than it has been, which is another good sign. We've also seen improved access for businesses near the intersection, which is a big plus for a lot of business owners there. And you want to speak to the other, a little anecdotal information, I think?
So when we changed the timings out there, we noticed that when the light turned green on Indian River Road, there was a lot of horns. And we looked around and we noticed that the first car at the, at the stop or even the second car at the stop bar, they were looking at their phones. They were, they weren't paying attention. And it's because we changed the signal timings from 180 seconds down to 70 seconds. When you're the last, when you're the car that pulls up to a fresh red light, a lot of people pull their phones out, because they know they've got another 60 to 80 seconds before that light's going to turn green again. Well, that light was turning to green again in 22 seconds. And these people just weren't ready for it. They weren't ready to get moving again. And we noticed, on the hour that we were out there, we noticed this at least six times, that people just weren't moving, because they were looking at their phones. So it is going to take some driver education. It is a lot snappier out there, and they're going to be moving a lot quicker and be getting through the intersection a lot quicker, but they have to be ready. So that was one of the unintended consequences, is that it's, driver education and driver behavior is going to be modified out there.
Okay, thanks. So again, it's just seconds, but seconds count out there. It's a big deal. All right, you want to hit the video there, Howard? So we got this video posted on the city's website, and this is just kind of a two- on the city's website. And this is just kind of a tutorial to kind of walk you through how this intersection works now. And I hope this sounds...
The city of Virginia Beach is nearing completion of the intersection improvements at Indian River and Kempsville Roads. The newly configured intersection will be open to traffic late 2019. This video will reacquaint drivers with how to navigate this unique intersection. Viewers will be given a tour of the intersection from above, as well as from a driver's point of view. Upon completion, left turns from Indian River Road to Kempsville Road will be accomplished using an indirect left, also known as a Michigan left. Drivers will use newly constructed median U-turns to efficiently complete the left turn. To make an indirect left turn from Indian River Road to Kempsville Road, drivers will get in the dedicated left turn lane, then travel directly through the intersection towards the signalized U-turn lane, and stop at the signal. Once the signal turns green, vehicles traveling on Indian River Road will stop, and you can then make the complete U-turn. Proceed back towards Kempsville Road using the dedicated right turn lane. Continue in the right turn lane as it turns right, then follow it to Kempsville Road. Yield to oncoming traffic and then turn right onto Kempsville Road. Left turns from Kempsville Road to Indian River Road will be accomplished using a displaced left turn. Drivers will use newly constructed left turn lanes to efficiently complete the left turn. The following demonstrates how displaced left turns will be accomplished for northbound Kempsville Road. However, southbound left turns from Kempsville Road are accomplished the same way. To make left turns from Kempsville Road, drivers will enter the dedicated left turn lane before reaching Indian River Road and stop at the signal. When the signal turns green, drivers proceed by crossing southbound Kempsville Road and continue along the dedicated left turn lane, stopping at a signal at Indian River Road. Once the signal turns green, drivers will turn left onto Indian River Road. These improvements to the intersection result in less time...
You can stop him. So, that, in a nutshell, is the intersection and where we are. We certainly know there were some hiccups a couple of weeks ago. And we jumped on that and tried to get those resolved as soon as possible. And I think what we've got now is a well-running intersection. Again, we're going to continue to make tweaks and improvements as they're made available. And we can implement those.
Okay, Jessica, then Sabrina. And John.
Thanks for sharing all this information today. And I live very close to this intersection and use it probably every day. But, I had a couple of questions and then just some comments as being somebody who frequents that road often. How many cars are getting through the light cycle per light cycle?
We don't have count yet, do we?
We don't have numbers per se of how many cars can make it through. But, again, because you're getting, you're doubling the number of cycles. So, if it was 160 seconds and now we've got 80 seconds, you know, it's doubled the number. So, we don't have numbers per se. But, we have increased those green times in the recent weeks because we do know that it was trickling, there was allowing two or three cars to go through. And some of the timings were just off. Like, all I can say is they were off.
Yeah, I drove through it this morning. And when I was coming off of Feral Parkway up through Indian River Road, there was probably five or six cars that were making it through. It was, this morning, it was a lot of traffic. So, I'm not sure. I mean, I'm sure that's the peak AM or whatever y'all call it. I assume at some point, we'll do some kind of traffic count to see how many cars, to try and troubleshoot to get...
Absolutely. We've already started that. We made some changes, actually, this afternoon that'll go into effect for this afternoon's peak hour, to allow for more traffic to go on Indian River Road. But, yes, we are going to do a complete traffic study after this is done. And, yes, we're going to be re-timing both the Indian River corridor and the Kempsville corridor, you know, after all the dust settles and we figure out, you know, what traffic is back there again.
When you guys talk about your monitoring, you guys are only coming out and doing site to see actually what's going on? Or is there, I guess you said there's no traffic count happening. So, what are the ways we're monitoring the intersection?
Mostly on-site at this point.
It is mostly on-site. Ultimately, there'll be another camera that goes back out there to monitor the intersection like we have at other intersections. But, that camera is down because of construction. So, we're out there on a daily basis. We have people that drive through it in the morning that make observations to us every day. And Dave and I were both out there yesterday. And we didn't know that both of us were out there at the same time. But, we are trying to get out there pretty much every day to kind of see what's going on and to see how traffic's flowing, especially when we make some of these little changes like we did today. We're really interested in being out there tonight to see, you know, what's going to be happening in the rush.
Do you know how many accidents have occurred in the intersection since your opening?
We do not know how many. Yeah, we would have to get a report from the police to find out. Again, this intersection ultimately is going to be a lot safer because we've reduced the number of conflicts considerably out there. I think we've reduced it from 32 conflict points down to eight.
Yeah, I mean, in the research I've done about this design, I've learned or presumed that they tend to be safer intersections. So, I'd be very interested in knowing what the accident history is of the intersection since opening. And obviously, we'll have a better understanding of really how safe it got after probably a year or so of it being opened. But, I think it would be interesting to know that information and probably build more confidence with the public in terms of why we decided to make these improvements. The general comments I had, there is, in the evening hours, when I've driven through Indian River Road, through the intersection on Indian River Road, down by the light near the Chick-fil-A where people always U-turn to go into that and then the backup happens, there seems, I don't know if there's any timing we can work out with that. Because I, in the evening, it seems like the traffic going towards Feral is backed up on the one side. And then, the light timing, that might have improved since I drove through it. The only other thing, I think, when you're heading towards the interstate up Indian River, it would probably benefit us to have more signage earlier. One thing I noticed is, it seemed like drivers were getting right up to where the first sign is that says, "Hey, this is a new intersection. And this is what's going to happen." Everybody's like frantically getting over to the left. And so, I think even near where that light is, near the Wawa coming up Indian River, just I think that where you show what the Michigan left looks like, that sign up there would probably do wonders for people knowing, "Oh, I need to move over to the left lane." And maybe something even further on Kempsville Road on either side. And I think that people just don't have enough notice. And then, they're erratically crossing over or missing it altogether.
We tried to tell folks too. These people say it's so different. But, the reality is, if you want to make a left, you still get in the left-hand lane. So, that part doesn't change. It's just when you make your movement, that's all.
Well, I just think it's, people are used to their pattern. And you have the interstate. So, people who aren't maybe familiar with the area don't expect it. And they think they can get over at the last minute. Because the one thing I will say, you really can't get over at the last minute. If you're not already in that left lane coming through the intersection, you're not going to make a left.
You're right.
So, that's it. I appreciate it.
Hey, Sabrina.
I just want to say, thank you, thank you, thank you for your hard work on this. I really appreciate your attentiveness to the complaints, you know, the issues that you've been receiving. And I think it's really important to express gratitude for what the work that you have done. Because oftentimes, we have challenges, we have problems. And we ask for different ways and constructive ways to address the problems. And you gave us a different way to solve the problem and an innovative way to solve the problem. So, I think that's, you know, I want to make sure that you understand. We appreciate what you're doing. Absolutely. Also, want to thank Mr. Mark Johnson because a few weeks ago, I received a barrage of emails, even text messages. I think I got a text message at 7:00 in the morning, just, you know, giving me an earful about what was happening, you know, in that area and on that project. And he, you know, was very quick to respond, addressed the issues and concerns, followed up with me, and has been continuing to do that on a regular basis. Because, as you said, this is a very important intersection, not just for Centerville, but for the city of Virginia Beach at large. Because a lot of, it affects a lot of people coming through that area. And so, you know, I want to make sure that, you know, people understand, as you said, that it is a learning experience. It's a learning curve. And that's one of the things that I try to communicate to constituents when they reach out to me. This is something that we're continuously working on. It's going to take some time. It's going to take some education. It's going to take some patience. But, I'm sure and I know that we're going to get through it. But, we're going to do it together. So, just want you to know, I appreciate that. And I also saw an email from one of my constituents today, who was, you know, giving me a lot of complaints and really concerned about what was going on. But, he said to me that the fact that you have synchronized some of the lights and the times have changed, that it's actually much better with his commute. And so, I think that says a lot. And that's a testament to what you've been doing and working on it. I know we have, you know, a ways to go. But, we're making progress. And updates like this are very important to the community, to the constituents. It lets them know, you know, what went into the project. It's not just something that was created to make your life miserable. It's actually a solution to the problem, to an intersection that's very, very, very busy. And I travel that intersection all the time. And I see the effects that, you know, that it's getting better. So, thank you. Appreciate your work. And I look forward to more updates on what you're doing. Appreciate that.
Hey, John, then Aaron.
I want to follow back up on the lessons learned. I'd like to turn to Slide 12 if we could, please. Is it standard in a major contract like this that we delegated the authority to open up roads and make them usable again? And we delegate that to the contractor to do without consulting the city?
That was one of the issues that came up. And we've spoken at staff level in the field. And we've also had conversations with the contractor and their executive staff about that process. And they said, "We made a mistake. We should not have done that." We usually have kind of a circle-the-wagon meeting. And we all get together and say, "Here's what's going to happen. Here's what's going to happen if something goes wrong." And that didn't happen. So, again, that was one of the mistakes that was made. So...
I'm assuming that future contracts will make that more explicit, that the contractor cannot unilaterally open roads and would require the city's endorsement before they could act. Because it sounds to me like you have an informal collaboration versus a contractual requirement.
We'll take a look at that. There's a general industry standard of care. I would use that term when this happens. And most people kind of understand that. But, there was just one incident where somebody didn't. So, we'll take another look at that with the contractor.
I mentioned it. And I'd like to know what the outcome is of your decision. We might have a different one. But, because things can have low probability of occurrence, but higher consequences of customer dissatisfaction. And to me, that's more important than the industry standard of care.
Understand.
So, I hope that's something. Now, we get back to using the erroneous signal timings. Who is the source that provides the timing signals to the contractor? Is that a third-party that we get it from and provide it? Is it done organically by staff and we provide it? Because clearly, they had signal timings. So, who was the source of the signal timings?
Want to talk about that, Rick?
Yeah, okay. The signal timings that were put in, they had, the contractor had different sets of signal timings. They had the ultimate signal timings. And they also had different phases along the way. They put in the wrong, they put in the timings for a previous phase that were not appropriate for this one, for this certain, for this particular phase of the intersection. Once that was recognized, and it was recognized pretty quickly through the, you know, through the complaints. But, once that was recognized, we did work to fix that. The difficulty here, as Mr. Jarman said, was that we've got one controller, we've got five intersections, and there's 16 different overlaps, or phases, as we call them. But, it was a very, it is a very complex intersection. The contractor was given the phasing plan, but they just didn't implement the plan correctly. And we have gone back and we've rebuilt the phasing to make sure that the controller can handle it. And that's what we implemented just last week.
So, make sure I understand. So, the contractor has access to install in our boxes the stuff per the contract. The contractor actually built the signal timings to make the intersection work at the different phases. They installed the wrong phase. Does that mean that we are not being billed extra and that the contractor, because they made an error, has been absorbing the cost of all the corrections that had to be made in the interim? Or are they passing additional cost on to us for that?
At this point, no additional cost, no.
All right, just make sure that's straight, who's paying. Now, I'd like to come back because this is a question I've asked constantly and haven't got an answer yet, is when the project was pitched, you said you talked about high-level models and then you moved to a level. If you can't do it today, can you share what was the modeled performance that when we signed off on the contract, we said, "It's 70 seconds and it's 20 cars. It's 30 seconds and it's 15 cars." Whatever that is, there was a modeled performance you expect to give under different conditions. And that must have been known upfront. And that's not the contractor's requirement to meet because he's just building to the spec that does that. But, I'd like to see what that is. And then, when we do complete the project and you're able to monitor it, are we getting the performance that we bought, or we thought we bought? And if it's something different, do we understand the variance? Is it human behavior? Is it just things we didn't know? Because these are the lessons learned we can carry forward. I think you've done the good a job as you could do to mitigate once the thing kind of unraveled in a direction you hadn't planned on. But, nonetheless, there are lessons to be learned. And at the end, we still like to know, the public likes to know, did we actually get the performance that we thought we were going to get? And if not, why not? That's, I'm very interested in that. And also, I'm sure you're going to do some kind of hot wash-up at the end of this. What were the lessons learned that we will carry into future contract documents to make sure that we don't have people taking away our discretion to act? And then, we're reacting to customer feedback, which all of us would have liked to have avoided. But, nonetheless, it is what it is. And I think you've done a good job trying to recover from it. But, I am interested in the lessons learned. Thank you very much.
Hey, Michael, then Aaron.
I was before you, Michael. No, I was before you. Thank you for your presentation and for the information. And I would like to associate myself with the comments of Councilmember Wooton, who said, "You know, we are going to work through this together." And we certainly appreciate everything that you've done to get us there, as well as the open-mindedness to innovation. But, to follow up on the remarks of Councilmember Moss, when he was talking about lessons learned, you know, I wasn't familiar with the discussions that led to the development of this intersection. But, you know, I think everyone on council and certainly all of you in your office know, this is not a popular intersection in Virginia Beach. Residents do not like it, many of them. I haven't heard anyone who does. And, you know, that's, comes with the territory with change and innovation. And there's some value here that you demonstrated. And so, that's great. But, the outcomes are yet to be determined. And so, my question is, is this the first style of this intersection that's been implemented in the city? And do you have any plans to adopt this style of intersection in the future?
Well, I can answer the question about, or the comment about the change. Drivers don't like change. And this is obviously something different. When we planned and designed the roundabout down at the Oceanfront, we had meetings where, you know, we could have been run out of town because they just did not want the roundabout. It was different. But, I can tell you for a fact now that the drivers would never go back because the roundabout is efficient, it's safe, and it was everything that we promised it would be. As far as this intersection, this intersection style has never been done in the city of Virginia Beach. The offset, or the displaced lefts, that was recently opened in the city of Norfolk at the intersection of Military Highway and Northampton Boulevard. And it was a little different because they didn't combine it with, they didn't combine it with the Michigan left turns on the other legs of the intersection. on the other legs of the intersection. So it is a little different and it's only, you know, one direction. But we are confident that this is going to work and it's going to meet all of our performance metrics. And the performance metrics that, that we did use were delay, obviously, delay at the main intersection, but also travel time through the corridor. Because this is not just meant to fix this one intersection. I mean, this is meant to fix the entire corridor because this intersection backs up pretty much all the way to the interstate in the afternoon rush hour. And sometimes onto the interstate before we did this. You know, just as late as yesterday when we were out there, it didn't back up onto the interstate. And again, we saw many, many improvements to make out there to this intersection and to the whole corridor to make these work together. So, and I would like to mention that, that this was studied before the project started. The Texas A&amp;M Transportation Institute, which is TTI, they contacted us and they wanted to use this as a research project. So they sent a team out here before the project even started to measure the travel times during the morning and the afternoon and some other performance metrics to do the before timing. And they're going to come back after the intersection's finished. We're going to let them know when the dust settles. And they're going to come back and study the same intersections. And they're going to study the same time periods to see what improvements we did, we do receive from this project. So this, this will be studied and they'll be giving us all their data that they've collected.
I, as a follow, quick follow-up, I'd be very interested to see that and as well as to consider the outcomes before moving forward with any similar plans.
Absolutely.
I think would be a wise decision.
Yes.
Aaron?
My question is, and I just want to echo the sentiments that's already been said. Transition is, can be a difficult process and there will be a lot of lessons learned. Particularly around the bouts. I lived in Wisconsin for a few years and the roundabouts worked very well up there. But I've never encountered a Michigan left until now. And so I'm wondering, can you break down, and you had a great presentation, but just in this simplistic form, what are the benefits of a Michigan left? Because I'm still trying to understand, why can't I just make a simple left from Kempsville to Indian River as opposed to a Michigan left?
Sure. Well, if you could go back to, yeah, this slide here.
It's cold.
So typically in an intersection, you've got four phases. You've got the left turns, we'll just, the left turns from Kempsville, the throughs from Kempsville, then the left turns from Indian River, and then the throughs from Indian River. So that's four different phases. Each one of those phases takes up a certain amount of time. And, and so all four of those phases added up, you get to about 180 seconds or 160 seconds. And that's a lot of time for people to be waiting, considering that you only get, if you're going to be making a left turn, you only get about 20 seconds of that time. It means you're going to be sitting for 160 seconds. So what we did, what we did here is that the left turners are now through vehicles. So when you go through the intersection, we don't have the left turn phase and then the through phase.
Oh wait, hold you up.
And then left, in the through, correct.
Okay.
So now, you get, you get as much green time as the through vehicles do.
Okay.
So if the through time got 40 seconds and the left's only got 20, now you're going to get 40 seconds. And we make up the efficiency. You know, what happens is that this light goes green here when this is going green anyway. So this traffic couldn't be moving anyway. So we stop you here and let these U-turners go and make that left turn. So it does, it does take your distance a little bit further, but travel time-wise, it's going to be a lot quicker for you.
And you're not just shoving the problem further down the road because those movements can occur when similar movements are happening at the intersection. So a lot more is happening at one time. That's kind of the genesis behind this. A lot more can occur.
And does these new Michigan lefts intersection, how does that affect back towards, I forget what street that is, where the Wawa is, off of Farrell Parkway?
Okay, so that, so back down that way.
Yeah, because I've noticed the traffic is a little bit longer now.
Well, what's, what's happening is that you're not stopping, you're not stopping at the intersection here anymore. So traffic used to queue back from here, all the way back. Now traffic is queuing up from here. So you're going to stop here once, once this light goes green, it's going to go green here. So you're not going to stop here ever again if you're coming east or west. The only place you're going to stop is up here. So it may seem like you're backed up a little bit further and closer to the Wawa. But we've kind of moved the queues back a little bit. You'll never stop, you know, here unless maybe you're the last car that makes it through this green light and you happen to hit a red light here. So we've moved the queues back to the upstream intersections. And that's maybe why it does appear that you're stopping a little bit further back, further back towards the Wawa. But I can tell you that when this, when this thing is working, in the off-peak hours, there are no queues at this intersection pretty much ever during the off-peak hours.
Okay, Lewis and then Jess.
Oh, Lewis is out the tail.
Yeah, we got the pointer here.
Professor Jones, take over to class.
I went through it, through it. If you come down here, and you're coming out here, and you're trying to make a left onto this, onto this lane right here, you, you have to completely turn around to see the traffic coming from this direction. It's dangerous because, you know, if you don't turn around far enough to look, you're going to get hit because you got traffic coming through here. Now maybe you got some kind of signalization that's going to correct that. But that's, that's the problem that I see.
Okay, they're, they're going to be putting the final striping out there very, very soon, like as in early next week. And what we've encouraged them to do is to kind of swing that stop bar back so you come back more to 90-degree angle. We obviously want to reduce the angle that you have to look over your shoulder. So we are going to fix, try to fix that angle as best we can.
We can make it more abrupt.
Yes, sir.
Where the driver can actually see what's coming from the other way.
Yes, we try to get as close to 90 degrees as possible.
That's good. Jess?
I had a question. In theory, these queue, in between the first stop bar heading towards the interstate and the second stop bar at the intersection, will there be, in theory, any cars queuing in that once we're at optimal usage? Or will it, or will there always be a chance of cars queuing in that in-between those two stop bars?
There, there won't be cars, there won't be, the through vehicles will never, will never queue between there because the, the traffic signal timings won't allow you to be queued. Like I said, there may be one or two, but there'll never be a time where, where this is green and this is red.
So in theory, anybody heading the opposite direction will always be able to U-turn?
Yes. It, so this, this goes green, this light here for the U-turners, it goes green while this movement's going.
Okay.
Unless somebody pulls out of the shopping center, you know, I mean, then they would be in that, kind of that, in-between the signals.
In, in theory, once we're moving, with everything the way it's supposed to be, that won't be, because I'm, I've been in that, that in-between those two, those two stop bars before. And it get backed up to where whoever's trying to U-turn cannot. So, but I mean, that hasn't happened recently, but I'm assuming that that...
We fixed, we fixed all the inefficiencies of the, of the signal timings. The signals are now working together the way they're supposed to.
But that, that spaces, the purpose of that is not to let cars queue in that. That's to let P cars turn around and proceed through the intersection.
Correct. And in fact, we have queue detection out here and it's mainly for these U-turns. So that when the U-turns back up to here, this light will go, that light will go green to relieve that queue. So we are going to have queue detection as part of the final product. And that hasn't been installed yet. That's one of the last pieces.
John?
Are the sensor systems tied to an algorithm, like with self-driving cars and things, that's self-learning and makes adjustments and self-corrects its timing? Is it a, is it a knowledge-based algorithm so it can solve problems itself based on experience of the intersection, based on both sensor data and digital camera data?
We, we do have some of those intersections in Virginia Beach. I think Linneham Parkway, our, our traffic management people have done adaptive traffic signals in that corridor. Unfortunately, because this corridor is, it's completely saturated and it will operate at the max times during the peak hours, unfortunately, this intersection's going to operate fixed time pretty much through all the rush periods because it's completely saturated, meaning that it would never be underserved.
I get the saturation period and self-learning software would know that. I'm talking about the off-peak times, 2:00 in the morning, 3:00 in the morning. I'm asking, does the, does the soft, and it might not, that's okay. I'm just trying to understand what its capability is. Is the algorithm self-learning and allows it to make adjustments and autonomously make decisions in a business rule set? And I guess the answer is no, that's okay.
This one doesn't yet.
No, thank you.
Hey Guy?
I understand we're going to wait till we get the outcomes on this one before we do more. But I hope if they're good, we'll do more. My question is about the roundabouts. That one, as I expected, because I've driven a lot in Europe and gotten used to roundabouts and they solve a lot of problems.
Yes, sir.
And make traffic move smoothly, if not as fast as you'd like to go always. The thing is, you stay moving, which...
Yes, sir.
That's, just psychologically makes everybody feel better. What, what's the roundabout future for Virginia Beach? Are there other intersections where we can use that?
Absolutely. We are working on, we're working on one for...
Nemo and George Mason, right over here is going to be the next.
Nemo and Westneck.
Nemo and Westneck for Nemo Phase 2A. It has to be the right intersection. Like, it wouldn't have worked here. It's just too much traffic.
It handled, roundabouts handle up to about 40,000 cars an hour. And this one is 106,000. So obviously, it wouldn't work here. We also, you know, you need to have two-lane roads or fewer, or two or one lanes because you really couldn't handle a three-lane roundabout. That would become unwieldy with the turning movements.
Get some of those in Paris.
I think they're a bit too.
We'll call you when we have the next public meeting though, because we may need you there.
But, but we do have another one that's being installed as part of the, as part of the VDOT interchange project. It's going to be on Greenwich Road. Greenwich Road between Newtown and Witch Duck Road. There'll be a roundabout there as you get on the interstate.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hey Sabrina?
I just wanted to make note of maybe one unintended consequence of this project because there are some constituents who are concerned about the traffic that's diverted through their neighborhood nearby. And so I just want to be mindful that, that traffic and activity is picking up. And we want to try to mitigate that traffic that kind of, you know, goes through and cuts through those neighborhoods as much as possible because it is frustrating to the citizens that live there.
Yes, ma'am.
So we could just keep that in mind. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Hey, anybody else?
Okay, if I could say, I've been dealing with this intersection since 1992. And I can tell you it's been a nightmare for a very long time. Back in the day, when they had the Golden Corral there, and they have a, what you, another side benefit of this, there is now a single light at Caniford Lane where, you know, that neighborhood is, the Carriage Mill. There, I have seen so many accidents there. I saw cars, you know, flipped over, you know, it was so bad. And it was pretty, you know, I think the accident count right around there was, you know, pretty well up there. And the other thing is too, you know, if you go to St. Louis or you go to Washington to make a left, don't you have to drive one block past, make a right, a right, and then come around that way? So, but this was a learning curve and, you know, trust me, there was a lot of construction there. There was a time there was, to make a left turn, you had to drive straight and then, you know, come down on Kemp's River Drive to make a left. But once they got the lanes over and the advantages I see, that the through traffic and the left go simultaneously. And, you know, whereas before, they had to stop traffic to make the left, but now they, they just move, you know, the same way. Just a couple suggestions. And then another thought too, is that a lot of traffic comes down Farrell Parkway because the only interchange on 64 is at Indian River Road right there. So a lot of folks come, you know, you know, down that way. And a lot of folks that live out in, you know, the Westneck area take Indian River down, you know, from Punggol down to get into there. The other thing is, there were a number of years ago, when this was proposed, that I think there were three different public engagement things at Tallwood High School that showed the computer models and everything. But once again, it's going to be a learning curve. But the one thing that if you can look at, I noticed a little design flaw in the signage. When you're coming up from Tallwood High School crossing over, the left lane sign is on a pole that make, that you can make the left into Caniford. It really occludes the sign that shows you how to make the left.
Yes, we...
We do know that. And it's just because it's such a tight corridor with the spacing of the signs, but we have noticed that as well.
Yeah, because I was thinking if you put the Caniford sign, you can actually put it on the pole, run it up instead of on the, you know, thing there.
Yep, we can move it closer.
Yeah, but I have a feeling that a lot of people that go through that intersection, most of them get through it daily. And I noticed that you started the paving today.
Yes, sir.
You started the, you know, the scraping for the paving. And I assume you're going to have white lines that are going to further define?
Absolutely. It should be done sometime next week.
Yeah, that'll help, that'll help a lot.
Yeah, but I think once folks get used to it, I think, yes, usually the queue, you would be stacked all the way to Regent University and even on top of the bridge. Yesterday, I noticed the stacking was right around Lake James. So I think, I think it is improving.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Very informative.
Okay.
All right, well, Mayor and members of council, I do want to point out that neither David Bradley nor Mark Johnson could be here today. They both have really significant personal issues that they are dealing with. But I do have Alice Kelly, our Director of Finance. Okay, there she is. Kevin Chadelier, the Co-Acting Director of Budget and Management Services. Kevin. Phil Pullen, again, the City Engineer, and Phil Ketter, the Operations Engineer. And we're going to discuss the, I guess I would call this the initial discussions of the 2020 bond referendum that has been, that you've asked us to consider. So Kevin, you want to go ahead and take away?
Absolutely. Mayor, members of council, as the City Manager said, my name's Kevin Chadelier. I'm with the Department of Budget and Management Services and I'm filling in for David Bradley today, who really put together this coordinated effort to gather the information here that we're going to be presenting today. So as the City Manager said, this is going to be a high-level overview, very preliminary discussion related to some of the things involved that would be involved in a bond referendum for Stormwater. Going over the brief agenda for today, it's going to be broken up in several different components. I'm going to be opening up, talking about some of the referendum logistics. Phil Pullen from Public Works is going to be coming up, talking about flood control and the possibility of accelerating some flood control projects. Phil Cotter from Public Works is also going to be coming up, talking about accelerating some possible operation and maintenance projects in the CIP. Alice Kelly from Finance can be coming up, talk, excuse me, talking about the financial implications. And then I'll be coming back up to talk about some possible funding scenarios as well as implications or projected impact on debt service metrics. So again, hopefully today, the information that's being provided to City Council will be enough to inform City Council to begin having a discussion and really answer a couple of basic questions. One, does City Council actually want a bond referendum? And two, what would that look like? What would the makeup of that be? The right mix of projects, the financing plan? How would that actually look? So some of the referendum logistics, to provide a brief overview of that. City Council can request a referendum with six votes. Those, the request needs to make it to the Circuit Court 81 days prior to the election day. If City Council chooses to have a referendum and referendum is actually passed by the voters, there's additional action that would be required of the body. Eight votes would have to be, eight votes would be required to legally authorize the bonds. In addition to that, additional ordinances would need to occur to actually estimate the revenue appropriate, funding to the projects, so forth and so on. A key assumption to the discussion today is that City Council maintains the existing plan that's in place that was approved by council during the last budget process. Included with this plan is a 3.5 cent ERU rate increase each year through FY '25, as well as maintaining in place a 2.5 cent real estate dedication that was established by City Councils in Public Works' operating budget. Also needing to stay in place would be the baseline CIP as approved by City Council and the plan of staffing Public Works and Stormwater to complete that CIP. Again, this is really just the initial phase of a much larger 15-year plan. Public Works has identified a 15-year need of a $1.3 billion estimate to complete some of the Stormwater initiatives and projects. And again, this is just a portion of that. City Council might be more familiar with this graphic that represents that $1.3 billion need. need. The inner circle there is what the FY nineteen, see, approved six-year CIP was, at two-hundred-and-eighty million dollars. The next ring out is the proposed FY twenty-one CIP, six-year CIP, as submitted by Public Works recently to our Department for Review, and that's four-hundred-and-ten million dollars. So, you can see over that couple, two-year period, it's a sizable increase. The next line out, that red dotted line, that's actually where the referendum, preliminary referendum discussion that's occurring today would put Public Works in terms of a funding plan to address that one-point-three-billion-dollar need. And you can see that the outer ring there, that two-to-five-billion-dollar sea-level rise need, this referendum that we're going to be talking about today won't begin to address those issues at this point in time. So, coming up next, to talk about, more about the flood control projects possibly to be accelerated, is Phil Pullen.
Good afternoon, Phil. I'm going to stand right here, so I'll look at the screen for you guys. Good afternoon, good afternoon, Mayor and Council Members. I'm going to briefly describe the program we put together for the, just the flood control projects, and understand that there's a myriad of programs we could have put together, combinations of projects, because we have a whole list. But, what we did was basically put together the Cadillac, all the projects that we have identified, to see what those numbers looked like. So, here they are on a summary sheet, if you will, all the flood control projects that we have basically identified to date, and they total thirty-six projects. You'll see on the, and I've got them shown here by district. Now, that doesn't total thirty-six, because they're rolled up into bigger ones, but there's sub-projects located within those, but those total thirty-six, rolled up, again, into the major projects. The columns over to the right, the first one is the total project cost estimate as of today, in the FY twenty-one CIP, as we submitted to Budget Office. The middle column is the programmed funding in the FY twenty-one CIP. And then, the third column over to the right is the, what we call the balance to complete, but that's the funding needed to finish, complete that project. So, running through these real quick, Rose Hall District, everybody should be familiar, I hope, with the big three, we call them, Princess Anne Plaza, Windsor Woods, and the Lakes. Those are ongoing projects, just like Bayside District, Lake Bradford, Chub Lake, that's an ongoing project that needs additional funding. Lynnhaven District, the Eastern Shore Drive projects, several sub-projects in that, they need funding. Beach District, the Central Resort, the, the big hundred-and-thirteen million, that, that needs a lot of funding. The Centerville, Kemp's Field, here's a new one, Stumpy Lake Watershed Analysis, three million dollars. And I will tell you, we just put that in there as a placeholder. We know that there's a need in that area to, for flood control, we just don't really know what that is. So, that's a, that's a placeholder there that we would study and move, move out to define some projects. Centerville District, College Park and Level Green, again, another one that Tony's presented in her quarterly projects, updates ongoing. Princess Anne District, three new projects we've identified here. The Sandbridge-New Bridge Intersection, Ms. Henley will be very familiar with these. Indian River Road Elevating, Elevating of Indian River Road, and Elevating of Punggol Ferry Road. We have a study that we looked at several roads down there, these kind of rise to the top. We threw those in there at those costs you see. Now, if I take you all the way to the far right, and all the way down, I don't have a pointer here, but Tom could point, there's a four-hundred-and-thirty-one million dollars. That is the bond referendum amount.
I ask you...
Yes, ma'am, jump in here, ask any question you want.
The Princess Anne projects don't control any flooding. They accommodate the flooding.
Correct.
So, you haven't given up on trying to control the flooding, so we don't have that much flooding, have you?
No, ma'am, we have not, but we don't know what the solutions are as of today.
As of today, right.
We do not know.
See, that's just my point.
Yes, ma'am. You were right, but we did put those in there, because we knew you'd be unhappy if we didn't put something in there.
We had to put something there.
We got, and those are valid projects. Those will raise the roads, so people can get out east-west along Indian River and Punggol Ferry.
But, that's assuming, okay, we're going to have flooding, so this is going to get us out, but it doesn't do anything to control the flooding around people's property.
We have not come up with a solution yet. So, the four-hundred-and-thirty-one million, that's where the, the number Kevin showed on Slide Five, if you add that to the four-hundred-and-ten million in the FY twenty-one CIP six-year total, that's where you get to eight-hundred-and-forty million dollars.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes.
Does, I don't, and maybe this is one of the small projects, is the Elizabeth River meaning the weir and the coordination Norfolk and Chesapeake, any of that?
Sea-level rise.
Okay.
No. This is, again, to reiterate, this is flood control only, not sea-level rise, sea-level rise, uh...
And so, that falls into sea level?
Differentiated. Yes, ma'am. That's in the two-to-five-billion outer circle that, that Kevin showed. So, yes, this is not, this referendum does not address sea-level rise, this proposed referendum.
We are trying to get into the core three-by-three-by-three program, where they would take our comprehensive sea-level rise study and the, all the extensive modeling doing, and get us into the pike for the Water Resources Development Act, where there would be a cost sharing between the federal government and the city.
Thank you.
So, the next step we took, my team was, is we, we set out to deliver, or to program schedules for those thirty-six projects based on a financially unconstrained scenario. And so, that's what these assumptions talk about. But, I do want to point out that we still have some constraints that are just typical project constraints, permitting, right-of-way acquisition, utility relocations, normal in all projects, we have them, anybody that would deliver the projects would have those, so we factor those in there. Again, we also have projects such as, constraints such as, you can't build all projects consecutive, together. Some you have to build sequentially. You can't build Project B until you build Project A in some cases. In other cases, as Mr. Leahy has mentioned before, we don't want to go into a neighborhood and tear every street, every road up, and put a hundred million dollars' worth of infrastructure one time. That would not make them happy, it would not make anybody happy, that just is not practical. So, we considered that in developing schedules. So, I will show you here, the thirty-six projects broken down into four charts, I'm going to show you, and the schedules that we've achieved, that we've, we think we can achieve and advance if we, if we get this bond referendum funded. This first one here are existing projects, twelve existing projects that are not fully funded in the CIP, but if we got the funding, there's where we can advance the schedule, too. So, you got the project, the current construction start date, referendum start date, what we think, and the amount advanced. So, you can see, basically, one to five years is what we think we can advance those twelve projects to. You know, one, there's seven months, one's up to six years. Now, I'll point out, project number eight, it's kind of an anomaly, it says twenty-seven years. That's really a reflection of the amount of funding going through the project now. It's not accruing much now, so it really, you know, the twenty-seven years is a little, little bit of a anomaly, because it's, it's not funded that way. This next chart here shows eight projects that are partially or fully funded. Schedules did not change on this, on these, basically because they're all, they're imminent, they're getting ready to go to construction soon, twenty, next year, and, and within eighteen months. So, the funding really wouldn't change those schedules. This, this next group of projects are twelve that we've identified, but they're not funded in the current program. So, those are the schedules that we can achieve if we got this referendum funding. This is part of the thirty-six. These last four are the ones we saw, Ms. Henley, that, we call them other stormwater projects, not, not flood control, as you, as you pointed out. We call them others, but they are stormwater projects, essentially, road raisings and the Stumpy Lake Watershed Analysis, and that's when we could start on those, based on the schedule we think we can achieve.
But, notice, of all those other three charts, there's not a one that's anywhere in the southern watershed of the flood control projects.
That is correct.
Well, the, of course, the major ditch and canal work would still continue, but in, really, the solution in the southern watershed is a solution to Back Bay wind tide flooding, and that is a massive issue. That is some, that is not a project that we have, we're working on trying to identify what the alternative could be, or might be, and then we are looking at a project that will have massive regulatory consequences, massive, uh, fi, fee, uh, financial feasibility issues, and we will have to compare that to other alternatives. We are going to bring you, in the next couple of weeks, or soon, a program to where we would like to fund and start a voluntary acquisition program that may help in some cases, where people would like to voluntarily convey their property to us, similar to what we've done in the BRAC process.
That goes to this chart here. Oh, I'm sorry, sorry.
Let me go back, though, because I think realistically, we do know what the solution is. I mean, Ms. Henley's been, has provided evidence showing what the solution is, going back a hundred years, you know, the cut-through, but, but I think the regulatory issue is, is, is where the problem is. So, I mean, we know what the project could be, and I think you kind of addressed this yesterday in Richmond, you know, there's a difference between, you know, the engineering solution and the political reality, but, and regulatory reality.
And it really wouldn't be a cut-through, it would be a pump station, and it will only work if the marshes that, in the, historically have slowed and restricted water movement from Currituck Sound are restored, or somehow replaced with some kind of engineering structure that would do the same thing. We would have great difficulty pumping the amount of water out that we would need in the absence of restoring the marshes, and the difference it would make would be eaten up in about twenty-four years with additional sea-level rise. So, you have to restore the marshes, and that is a significant, uh, regulatory issue involving the state of North Carolina, which I have a little bit of experience with on water issues, is not something that goes out with a general nationwide permit.
Right.
But, the important thing is that we don't let that discussion just lapse, because it is such a big thing. I mean, I think we've come to realize that this is what it's going to take, but clearly, you know, we are talking about two states, which, you know, thankfully, we have been working on that relationship, and I'm hoping all three levels of government and so forth. So, we need to keep it on the table. But, you know, when we're talking about a referendum, and we're expecting people to support it, I mean, I know we say we've got to give people all over the city something to, to get it, but when you've got two-thirds of the city that's not getting any relief from, well, not just stormwater, it's the wind tide, the tide, because we have, we're not looking at thirty years in the future, having to worry about the sea-level rise thing, we have it now. And that's, it's, we have to keep this discussion together, so that we realize that, you know, what we're impacting. You know, I, I know it's great to, you know, well, we're going to go raising these roads. Punggol Ferry is probably realistic to think that it might be able to be raised. Indian River, pretty, but for both of them, all of them, you know, you're looking at major permitting, and I think would probably delay things quite a bit. So, what's realistic and what's, you know, good to put, you know, two different things, but just, I just want you all to, you know, when you're looking at these three pages of projects, flood control projects, nothing for two-thirds of the city.
Okay, John, and then there.
Since we decided to have discussion during the brief, I thought this is a good place to pitch in. One of the things we don't talk about upfront is the threat, the threat to our existing fifty-six-billion-dollar tax base on which all our bonds, on which all our school revenues, which on all our acquisition of stuff in the southern part of the city. So, it isn't, anyone shouldn't be thinking about, what am I getting? It's, what as a community are we protecting? I think we saw some indications about what the potential impact on our tax base could be, if we let the, maybe the low probability of occurrence, but the high consequence event take place, then we would all be looking at a significant diminution of our private property assessed values, and also of our revenues. So, this is a lot like our own flood insurance program in effect, and it's an insurance premium that we're paying. So, I think, one of the things that we miss in this, and I've mentioned this before in our messaging, because the public is watching, and when we're talking about these civil projects, they, they are engineering, they are mostly, I'll call it, hard solutions because of the value development, but we never talk about the consequence of not taking care of the problem. And, and so, when you look at the consequence of if, and most of the development is in the northern part of the city, so if you say it's forty-billion dollars of tax base, and you're saying, over time, what you're paying annually for your premium, and how it might, so I think that the context of the thing has to be bigger than any one neighborhood, or we're never, because the whole community is at risk. You know, some, you know, I live fairly high up, I probably don't have a lot of flood risk, you know, but if I had a sea-level rise, certainly will eventually impact me as well. But, I don't mind paying the higher taxes if I know we're out there protecting with affordable housing that's in these flood-prone areas. It's a, a community investment, not a personal investment. And I think if we're, everyone's looking at, what's in it for me? Well, what's in it for you is having a community that can sustain itself. And if we don't make these investments, it's highly, unlikely that we will see a Matthew-type event in that course of period, which is why we're trying to pull things to the right. So, I think, no matter where you live in the beach, you have a vested interest in making sure our community's tax base is protected best we can, and the threat isn't going to decline. So, I, I do think we shouldn't, what I've often said, and I'll say it again, we need to use these models to visualize, so that people can see what these numbers mean in terms of, if we had a Matthew and all this stuff was in place, what would the beach have looked like? Because people can know what it did look like, so they can then compare that to, if all this stuff was in place, what would we look like? And we could see what we're, I get the, what's the value proposition for the community as a whole? And I think we're, we're going to have to be able to show that, Tom, to really get people to make a nexus between the numbers and the project titles. This is a day of visual learners, you know, if you can't make a YouTube video out of it, people can't grasp it, good, bad, or indifferent, but it's like the video you did on the intersection, right behind the car. We need a similar type ability to visualize what this means relative to an event that people experienced.
I will say, I think, when we talked about, in the Princess Anne corridor, about replacing the marshes and replenishing them, I had a chance to visit down in New Orleans, I'm on the campus of LSU, and I don't know if you may be familiar with it, but they have a state-of-the-art facility where they look at the river basins, the Mississippi River Basin, obviously, is one of the huge ones, but all the river basins within the continent of the U.S., and, and, on North America, but they have basically saw in ways that they can replenish the marshes by pumping, you know, more mud and, and mitigating the surface, but they, they do that within five years, and not twenty-one years.
The time, the time for actually constructing, reconstructing the marshes probably isn't a matter of a few short years. The regulatory issue could be ten, twenty years, and there is an uncertain outcome at the end. The state of North Carolina has a virtual veto over whether or not we would get these federal permits needed to do that, and the federal permits are pretty extensive, and I did a little fourteen-year project in fighting North Carolina over a permit that had actually no impact.
Yeah.
We, our models already show that when we do things in Back Bay to make things better, it has a consequence, a small one, but it has a consequence on the other side of the marshes. So, these, this would be a very, very complicated issue, and it, it's not something that's going to be resolved in a couple of years. Certainly not by us, we're, this is why we're trying to get into this Water Resources Development Act funding, where the core, and it becomes a federal project, and they involve all these stakeholders, and still, it is a, we are really trying to change the environment on a very big estuary, and that is a very significant regulatory issue.
And maybe, you don't have any solutions now, and the solution may lie across state borders, and it may be a multi, multi-approach from different municipalities and locales to really find the solutions.
Yes, sir.
Hey, Barbara?
You all can help me with this. We had applied for a grant, a federal grant, that was going to do a very preliminary part of this marsh rebuilding thing, but we did not get the grant.
We did not get it. I'm glad you knew that, I didn't want to be the bearer of bad news today. We did not get the Nefwe grant.
But, Currituck County did get a grant, was it to do the same thing?
I'm not sure. Are you, Mike?
No, I don't, I don't.
I can follow up on that.
It would be good, if that's what they were planning to do, because then Currituck County would be determining whether or not this was going to work, so whatever they got, maybe they need our help.
Yeah. Well, if I can, Mr. Mayor, if I could, a couple more slides. So, this is a list of the projects not included in the referendum that will be ongoing, such as ones that, you know, Ashel Park, Aragona, that you know about. I'll draw your attention, Ms. Henley, to number fourteen, Stormwater Green Infrastructure. We introduce that into the FY twenty-one CIP, funded with, I forget how much, Mike.
Not until twenty-three.
Well, and again, this is, you know, we're being a little aggressive there, like Tom would say, you know, depending on the permitting, what we would have to do. I also draw your attention to project number sixteen. Also draw your attention to project number 16. This is the core stormwater, I mean, it's the core sea level rise study that we have put a million and a half in as what would be our contribution to the core accepting that project and moving it along to the next step. Tom has gone up to New York, and I went with him up to DC, and we think we're at the doorstep to getting that approved. So that is our funding piece of that. The rest of them are your continuation of programs such as a neighborhood stormwater infrastructure, your Southern Canal, Southern Rivers Watership. So I just wanted to let you know, those aren't being left out. These are not part of the referendum, but they would continue on. So, Mr. Moss, to your, you know, a heat map, it's not exactly what you're talking about, but this is a heat map we have from the sea level rise study. Hopefully, you guys recall us showing you this. And this shows the seven areas that are the most at risk, and that represents 88% of the city's risk. I put this map up here to show you that those 36 bond referendum projects that I just briefed you on are in those seven areas. So outside of capital money, we would need operating money if we were to do this, deliver $400 million worth of projects in a short period of time. We estimate we would need 16 FTEs, and there's the funding, operating funding, over the next five years to show what that would look like.
I continually make this point, before we commit to growing all these organic assets, we really need to make sure that the best value proposition isn't to acquire this capability and expertise from the private sector, rather than building up organic resources with higher defined benefit pension costs and fewer direct work hours and a number of things. This is a huge, and we need to make sure we're delivering this the best possible way. And I'm not sure organic resourcing is the right answer, especially since often we're not filling the jobs we've already created. So I, I really want that to have a robust discussion at the appropriate time.
We can do that. We can contract out project management. It has pitfalls, it's much more expensive, still need folks to oversee that. But there is a sweet spot into how many FTEs you get versus how much you can, I appreciate that.
Okay, Jess.
Oh, sorry.
I think you just answered my question, but at a later date, doesn't have to be today, I would like to see the benefit of doing contracted employees. I think, I think the concern would be is when we're done with all that, what will we do with those people we hired?
Well, that's, that's the valid point for the downside, the upside or downside, however you want to look at it. The other side is three times more expensive to provide contract management versus a staff.
Always true.
The other thing I would, I would mention is, there are, we are moving into the age where especially younger people want to be, be employed by a contract versus a full-time job, because they like the flexibility and the, you know, and the ability to move on to the next best thing versus being, feeling like they have to invest 20 years in a career and maybe stay where they are. I, I, I think really we should look hard at that, what that future looks like, because I think there might be some exciting professionals coming up, particularly in engineering, that might be really, a really great fit for where we are at and would be, would welcome a contract versus formal employment.
And the city's thought that before. Before my time, but we, we hired firms. We have done that before. Before my time, and the results were probably both some good, some bad.
Results were so good, people got elected and got rid of them.
If we can move on, we got to get into executive.
Operations, I'll turn it over to Philip Cutter to do operations.
We'll move along real quick here now. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. Most of the stuff that I'm going to show you, you have seen already before, our previous presentation where I was up here a couple of weeks ago, I showed you that we were proposing four projects, the, or programs and projects on the right-hand side. What we wanted to show in this particular slide is where the funding was or is coming from to do those. We have five stormwater projects that Phil had previously listed, that for the first two years in FY '21 and '22, we're proposing to defund those to support a $5 million infusion of funding into the operating budget to pay for the Pinewood culvert replacement, the Arctic Avenue Outfall slip lining that I presented to you before, and to start the reduction of our cave-in backlog to shorten the time on our cave-ins, and also to start a roadside ditch proactive preventative maintenance program. So that is the projects on the right-hand side for, that I just explained, and the funding, where it's coming from on the left-hand side.
Can you, at a later date, tell, provide your risk assessment as to why you, what the, on the Level Green and College Park drainage improvements, that $790,000, I could go look it up at the Pewbrush, what that was going to provide and what is the risk that we assume by deferring that? Is it something like there's four feet of silt in the canal in Level Green, we're not getting down? I'd just like to know when we said we did it, that's in a neighborhood, what, what risk did we assume? What do we not do?
I would have the same request on the 24th Street culvert, 16th Street pumps.
Yes.
Not saying we shouldn't assume the risk, I just want to understand what it is.
Right. Yes, we can do that. And in addition to that, what I'll be discussing a little bit more in detail on the next slide is the additional $15.5 million, you'll see on the bottom here, that we have projected for the FY '21 and '22. We'll add that $5 million to that, would be a total of a $20 million increase to our operating budget expenses.
Before you get back, I want to make sure you understand. So I got the first one, 15 needed in '21 and '22, and then I guess that 15.4 goes away. You don't have a FY '23 requirement for 15.4, but in FY '23 and out, the 15.4 jumps up to 20 million. 20 million adjusted for inflation is your sustainable number to do the, to maintain the standard, is that it?
No, no, sir. The, the, this particular slide is for, including the $5 million in redirection, as pointed out on the top line up here, for FY '21 and '22. It's a reduction in $5 million from these four, or these five projects to allow for $5 million infusion into the operation and maintenance budget.
I got that part. I'm down to the two sub arrows, where it says additionally, to on top of that $5 million, you need 15.45 million is needed to recommended maintenance program cycles in FY '21 and FY '22. So I'm thinking that in FY '23, that funding requirement went away, and I now go down to the second little carrot, and now I need $20 million annually to do something. And I'm asking, is that other carrot, the 20 million, at that point, you've stabilized your base, and 20 million is now the sustained annual amount to maintain all these things on their right cycle of maintenance?
The 20 million is on the third year or FY '23, because we don't have the $5 million for the first two years, yes.
All right, thank you very much.
And we'll go through that on the next slide.
If we get expedite, we have to get into close pretty soon.
The next slide is one that I showed to you two weeks ago. It shows you the current funding and the current cycle rates for the programs that we have in operations and maintenance, and the desired funding and desired cycle rates. As you pointed out, the 15.45 million dollars is indicated from this particular point. And I'm sure we'll be talking about this a little bit further, so I'll go ahead and move on beyond that. While not asking for additional staffing for those previous programs for that $20 million to support that, we are proposing to add a, four VAC trucks and crews to operate those to start a proactive stormwater pipe cleaning program. We feel that getting four new trucks and the staffing for those with the additional trucks and staff that we have would allow us to establish approximately a five-year cleaning cycle. This is different from our neighborhood rehab. This is just to clean and maintain the system in operation. Basically, right now, we respond to people that call in because their basin is clogged and it's flooded there, and then we send a VAC truck out to do it. We would try to, like to get to a proactive approach on that particular system. Now, I'd like to go ahead and turn it over to Alice Kelly to talk about the financial implications of the referendum.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council members. City of Virginia Beach has four categories, three categories of bonds. We have tax-supported debt, we have appropriation-backed debt, and fee and supported direct debt. Our tax-supported debt was GO bonds, that's backed by the full faith and credit of the city. We have charter limitations on those GO bonds. It's $10 million plus retired principal. We're talking about referendum bonds, which would be GO bonds backed by the full faith and credit of the city. So we'll go to the next slide. Our GO bonds are rated AAA, and this is the 10th consecutive year that we've been rated AAA by all three major credit rating agencies, Fitch, Moody's, Standard &amp; Poor's. The reasons why we're getting rated AAA is that we have a strong economy, excellent financial management practices, strong management with the capacity to meet our financial obligations, and our modest debt limit. And having a strong bond rating allows us to maintain very favorable interest rates in the bond market, which can save us millions of dollars over the life of a bond. Our current bond ratings are in this chart. Our GO bonds are AAA rated for all three rating agencies, and you can see the other ratings. I'm trying to, I'm sorry.
What is the basis points variation between what we pay on GO versus revenue versus these appropriation base? What's the marketplace of basis points?
It really depends on the market. The last time we looked at it was about .8 basis points, .0, I'm sorry, 8 basis points or .08%.
Very small.
It was very small now. We have a very favorable interest rate environment now. It could go up and down, and it just depends on who's selling the bonds, too. I think we have a very strong credit rating. Okay, so these are our rating agents. So the next slide I wanted to spend a little bit of time on is the criteria that the rating agency looks at for tax-supported debt. And so they use four major factors, and they each do it slightly different, but they really are evaluating the ability to repay their bonds, and each one of these factors are important. We can get a notch, a notch lower in one of them, but make up for it in another, another type of offset with another type of rating. So the economy and tax base look at the strength of real estate and personal property tax rates. The finances look at our policies on fund balance as a percentage of revenues and cash balance as a percentage of revenues. Our management policies include our operating history, our institutional framework, establishing sound financial policies, including conservative budget, budgeting approaches, and financial flexibility. So one of our policies is having a fund balance of unassigned fund balance of 8% to 12%. It's a very strong policy. They also look at our long-term liabilities and the strategies and policies we use to manage those long-term liabilities. For instance, fully funding our pension actuarially determined contribution. What rating agencies are doing now, though, is they're also emphasizing environmental, social, and governance factors. And part of that, environmental, is climate change and risk mitigation as criteria for determining the strength of our ratings. And so Moody's even cited about a year and a half ago, Virginia Beach, in one of their climate change reports, as we had a very strong plan. They look at this as a multi-year generational type of issue. So the logistics of a $4 million bond referendum. So tax-exempt bonds and any bonds that the city issues require us following and complying with a lot of many, many laws, one of them being that we have to follow IRS arbitrage requirements. Bond proceeds must be spent within three years of the debt issuance, or the city can issue debt and reimburse ourselves 18 months prior for bond expenditures that we've had. Generally, Virginia Beach goes the reimbursement route and expends the money and then reimburses ourselves. As Phil had said, the other Phil, not the Phil Pullen, had said, many of our projects require sequential, or we can't do the whole project at one time, you can't tear up a neighborhood all at once. So scheduling the cash flows, this bond referendum, we wouldn't issue the bonds all at once.
I have a question. If you have an omnibus contract which has a 10-year life, you went that route for big projects, which is done certainly overseas a lot, and you have an obligation, let's say, $200 million, and now you award the contract, so you have a liability, so you've allocated your proceeds, but you haven't actually expended them.
You have to spend the money.
See, that's, when someone says allocate, that's a different word than expenditure. So you have to actually expend the funds versus allocate. I'm just trying to, it says allocate the proceeds.
All right, well, so you spend the money, and then you allocate those proceeds to that bond. So I can see why you would say that, but now you have to have the money out the door. The cash has to be issued. And so, the point is that 400 million is not going to be spent, it's not going to be issued all at once, and you have to issue it in multiple, based on the cash flows and estimates of cash flows. And as a lot of the stormwater projects and permit issues, and so you don't know sometimes the exact timing of the, the project. The summary of our debt management policies. So we have really good financial management, we have comprehensive debt management policies, and we have main indicators. We have these four indicators that are used for debt affordability. They're not the only management tools we have, but they're the affordability ones. The first indicator is percentage of debt service to general fund or general government expenditures is focusing on the budgetary impact of debt. The government's ability to maintain service levels from year to year, given its obligation to make debt service payments. So S&amp;P, which is one of the main reading agencies, considered a ratio below 8% to be low, and from 8% to 15% to be moderate. So right now, we're at 7.8, which is a low factor for S&amp;P. Moderate is 8% to 15%, and that's where our policies in that moderate range. Other indicators are geared more to the community's ability to support further indebtedness. So the second indicator is overall net debt to estimated full value of taxable property.
Alice, could you, excuse me, interrupt. Could you define net debt for me for this purpose?
Net debt is the amount of debt that's outstanding. Mm-hmm. I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry, the amount of GO debt, the amount of general fund debt. GO debt. So the other indicators are more toward the community's ability to pay, so, or, so to support the further indebtedness. The second one is the net debt to estimated full value of the taxable property. And so our policy is no greater than 3.5%. We're at 1.4% right now. And so S&amp;P considers this ratio as very low, if under 3%, and low is between 3% and 6% of our debt. So low is considered, where our policy is considered low. So rating agencies are most interested in the government affordability, and the first two indicators weigh much heavily on their mind when they're discussing the rating agencies of, or the ratings of our, our city. They also comment on our city policies and then plans to return to compliance if anybody goes over those particular ratings for a particular reason. Sometimes the magnitude of a project or the ability to protect the tax base or to bring in a large project, they understand why sometimes the ratios might not meet our policy, but they're going to come back in line.
You may recall from the five-year forecast, the current CIP takes us to 9.3% either, I think in '21, '22.
Okay, so there's a difference between the actual, where this is what has been issued, and the forecast of what's, what's.
But it has bearing on the part that comes up next.
Next, absolutely. And therefore, Kevin will come up a little bit.
So that brings me back up to talk about some funding scenarios about, based on the preliminary work that's been done by Public Works and identifying some of these projects and based on their spin plan, as well as the projected impact on the city's existing debt metrics. So this slide is just a high-level overview of a few scenarios that we're going to kind of go over. So included on the screen, you see here, highlighted in that first white box there titled Flood Control Only. So in this first scenario, what this actually does is puts together a financing plan to address the referent, $431 million bond referendum issue amount alone, along with the flood control operating budget impacts that Phil Pullen had mentioned earlier. Obviously, if there's a pivot and a shift to move to contracted manpower, contractual basis, there being some needed resources for that as well. So we could also, again, run a scenario with that in mind. To fund the first scenario, and a dedication equivalent to 3.1 cent of the real estate tax rate would be required. The second scenario there, titled Flood Control and Enhanced Operation and Maintenance, kind of builds on the first scenario in that it fully funds the issuance of debt based on Public Works' projected spin plan, as well as the operation needs for flood control. And it also begins to address some of the operation and maintenance, operational needs, as well as accelerate some of the maintenance CIP program. Earlier, Mr. Moss, you were asking about the $5 million redirect. So in this scenario here, what this would do is establish $10 million in FY '23 and beyond, and $5 million in FY '21 and '22, because they've already redirected or planned to redirect $5 million. So to fund this scenario, that would require the equivalent of a 4.5 cent dedication of the real estate tax. The third scenario, Working Cross, builds off of the previous scenario. The only change to this one is that there is an enhanced. The only change to this one is that there's an enhancement of $15 million to address flood control, or, excuse me, operation and maintenance CIP projects. To fully fund this scenario would require the equivalent of 5.2 cent real estate tax dedication. And the final, the fourth scenario, is the flood control plus optimal operation and maintenance, and this is what Public Works was saying, is their optimal plan to get $20 million to address the maintenance needs in the stormwater CIP in FY '23 and beyond. To fully finance that scenario would require the equivalent of 5.9 cent real estate tax dedication.
Just two quickies. That's 20-year bonds, level principal payment, which we traditionally do.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Secondly, on the tax rates, did you assume that when we increase taxes, that we would harvest those taxes as applied to TIF funds rather than allowing those funds to go back and be retained by the TIFs, that in fact, that that amount would be harvested?
It is based on the per penny calculation. So however it gets generated, whether it's a redirection of existing dedications, or whether it was a new, a new tax change to the rate, it would be the same. So it's just based on the per penny.
I understand what I'm asking. We apply that to, real estate tax rate goes into a TIF. Traditionally, they would retain all those revenues because of baseline, but if this is for flooding, we have the ability and make sure in our appropriation policy to pull back and harvest that amount of money back and put it towards flooding, because they definitely benefit from flooding. I just want to make sure that everybody's paying.
In looking at the impact on the projected debt metrics, there's some baseline assumptions built into the debt metrics, as Mr. Moss had just asked. Yes, there is the assumption of a 4.5% interest rate over a 20-year period. That's what the issuance plan would be for the, for the bonds. Also included with that is a $79 million issuance related to renovation of building 1, 2, and 11 at the municipal complex. And the issuances for the referendum bonds are based on what Public Works has submitted as a reasonable spin plan for the referendum amount of $431 million. So the table on this page walks through each of the debt metrics that the city has. So the first being debt service as a percentage of general government expenditures. This has historically been one of our more restrictive debt metrics, and it's something that rating agencies look at closely. As you can see, over this period of time, we do not exceed our existing self-imposed debt metric of 10%. The second row represents the overall net debt to estimated full value of taxable property. City has a threshold of 3.5% over this period of time. We do not exceed that based on this projected scenario. The third row is the net debt per capita. The city has a self-imposed debt metric of $3,000 per capita. You can see highlighted in red beginning in FY '25 that the city, based on this projected scenario, we would exceed this debt metric from FY '25. You reach a high point in FY '27 of $3,149, and then it begins declining to the out years of this period.
How do you project, I'm sorry, John, how do you project the population?
The population? So we work off the estimate of Weldon Cooper's, and then we apply the traditional growth rate. It's actually slower. It's about .41% is the long-term growth rate that we've been experiencing, so we apply that to the projected growth in population in the future years.
Okay, folks, if we can get into wrap-up, we have to get into expedited.
I just want to make an observation about the interest rates. Our last bonds that we issued were just sold about 30 basis points over the 20-year treasury note rate. 20-year, 10-year treasury notes like 1.75. So I do believe that we just need to understand the sensitivity analysis for every 1%, because that's about double what the current market rate is for good municipal GO bonds. So I think that will have a big impact, but you never know till you issue them. But people need to understand, I don't mind a high number, but people need to understand that the long-term forecasted bond rate, because there's so much private equity money available, surplus of cash, that they're not expecting the fundamental change over the three-year period. So I think that's a lot on the high side.
Yes, sir, we can certainly run sensitivity analysis. And as you pointed out, over a period of time, we don't know what the future's going to hold, so it's a conservative estimate on the projection side.
That's exactly what I would do, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, Barbara?
If I could just real quickly, and I know that we've got to do other things too, but I don't like to do things piecemeal. I think we have to look things in the broad picture. And in looking at all of this, we can't just look at the stormwater issues when we're talking about this. And I hope, as we're doing this discussion about whether we do the referendum, we keep other needs in mind as well, because we can't put all of our eggs in one basket and all of our money on one thing. I'm glad that you did include the, the unexpected building costs that we've got, but also in related to that, as I mentioned last week, we have other security concerns at all of our buildings, as well as what we do with our employees. And I really think that whole piece we need to be talking about when we're talking about our expenditures for upcoming time. And then, of course, and I was asking more questions about the schools because of an item on our agenda today that gives me a lot of concern. When we meet with the school board, you know, we hear their concern about replacing buildings and that cost. And so I asked for their long-term plan on replacing school buildings, and that's got a major cost as well. I think we really have to be looking at all of these things, and there are probably other major things. We can't just look at one. We've got to look at all of them. And I hope that when we're doing these meetings and deciding whether we're going to do this, we'll at least keep these three and whatever else needs to be added in, because we're looking at some big numbers on all three of them.
Okay, thank you. Can we get to wrap-ups, Lois?
Absolutely. Moving forward, we had provided some sensitivity analysis related to our, one of our more restrictive debt metrics, based on slowed growth in the operating budget, as well as of 1% baseline assumed 2% growth. You can see, based on the sensitivity analysis, we never exceed our existing debt metric for this. The closest we get with 1% growth is 9.8% in FY '27 and '28. So some closing thoughts. Just to wrap it up real quick in summary, the proposed, or the preliminary discussion of this referendum doesn't begin to address the sea level rise issue. However, something that's important to note is that as principal is retired and the debt's retired from the referendum, it falls into the charter bond debt calculation, which creates capacity for future projects. So there's the potential for that to be reserved for future councils to issue additional debt or bonds in future years to address some of those issues out and further out.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Man, I know we have other things to do, so I just don't want to end this discussion without making a comment that the, this, I really appreciate the issues this discussion raised, and I think that we really need to spend more time talking about this. In the Rose Hall district, people, my neighbors live in fear of storms, as we know, and as well as the human impact of this discussion about stormwater, which, which has an impact on concentrated groups of families. And so I think it's critical that we continue this discussion, because this lack of confidence about our stormwater systems depresses neighborhoods, it depresses the assessed value of homes in our neighborhoods, and it, and it has the very real impact of stress and fear and anxiety on our families, which some of the, some of the other issues raised here may not have as direct an impact. So I think we need to consider continuing to prioritize stormwater and, and have another discussion about this in the near future.
I agree.
I folks live in fear of a Southwest wind.
Okay.
No doubt.
Without question. No, obviously, this is a priority. I appreciate this, and we will have further discussions, and it will continue to be a priority. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, at this point, council liaison reports. Yes?
This is from VDDC, the Community Development Corporation. They should be closing by the end of January. That's what they anticipate on the Cypress Garden facility for veterans in Chesapeake. That's one of the issues we had about investing outside the city, but they will then gain management revenues when they become the manager of it. And plus, there's a lot of people, it'll be instantly filled, there's oversubscribed, so good news. Secondly, thanks a lot to Mr. Freeman's help. The Virginia State Housing Authority, Development Authority has agreed to do, and at their own expense, a comprehensive assessment of their physical assets and what their capital plan needs to be and what that requirement is, as well as look at their internal proceedings. So they're going to be coming in and asking for a slight delay and extension on their audit deadline, because they want to incorporate those findings into their report back to us. That should be completed at the end of March. And I did follow up on the discussion, which we'll talk about later when we, when we meet, but it was a very good turn of events, and they're up to 91% occupancy towards their goal of four. It was a gain of 2.5% on their occupancy of their units, so that's certainly improving their cash flow. So I won't say we're over the hump, but we're moving in the right direction.
No, thank you very much. Okay.
Quickly, the Broadman Authority is going to meet next Monday at 3 o'clock with HR PDC.
Okay, thank you, Jim.
I just wanted to mention that yesterday was the Joint Subcommittee on Coastal Flooding that I'm a member on in Richmond, and Mr. Leahy came and gave a presentation on Virginia Beach's way that we're, we're addressing recurrent flooding and sea level rise, and he talked a lot about regional approach. Did, in fact, Barbara mentioned the North Carolina issue and things like that. And the takeaway that I took from a talk into the legislators from other parts of the state, they, they said that Virginia Beach seems to be very organized in our, in our approach to flooding, so that was, that was nice to hear that, and he did, did a fantastic job, so, so thank you, Tom.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, council comments, anybody? Okay.
I'm sorry, but I'll, I'll hold it, I just...
No, go ahead.
I had a question about the, I may have missed it, but I heard yesterday that Mr. Mathias' meeting with our legislative delegation was canceled. Do you may know anything about that?
I heard the same.
Yeah.
Had not heard it.
No, I haven't heard anything.
I was concerned about the reasons why and whether it was going to be rescheduled, and I was told that it, that he, that the message was, we'd do it after the session commenced. And the only problem I have with that, obviously, is the bill deadline is pretty much right on top of the commencement of the session, so I just was wondering whether, just asking whether you may know.
Yeah, we'll find out.
I'll find out. Mr. Mathias is also dealing right now with a significant personal issue, so I can't get into. But I will.
Yeah, okay.
I have two items, but I'll wait for old business out front.
Okay, thank you. All right, anybody else at this point? All right.
Okay, we have, under ordinances, we have a speaker on item two, so we'll be hearing that. Item one, everybody okay with that one, if you don't consent?
I refresh my memory.
Item one is ordinance transfer 367,000 within the operating budget of the tourism investment program, re-replacement of vehicles and heavy machinery for beach operations. Everybody okay with that one?
Okay.
Okay, item two is on, is going to be heard.
On, on item two, would it be terrible if we deferred this to week since we really haven't had a lot of chance to talk about it?
We've got speakers on it, so somebody don't have to...
I've really, you know, in adding the CIP project and looking at all of that and then all of their building requests, I really think we've got to do something really right here. I hate to just get into something with a, a reversion transfer.
We can do the motion out there, because we bring our speakers.
I really would like for us to talk about it this more, so we get it right.
While, while you're talking, Barbara, item, planning item K1, G's group, Princess Borough Development.
Well, I'm inclined to support it, but I would like to make some comments about why it needs to be supported or should be supported. We could put it on the consent agenda, and I can make my comments, unless there are speakers, but it had a lot of, a lot of discussion at the planning commission, and there's been opposition, but I kind of would like to just make a couple of comments.
Not a problem. Okay.
That's it.
That's it. Okay, at this point, the chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from the open meeting allowed by Section 2.2, 3711A Code of Virginia, is amended for the following purposes. Legal matters consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consulting or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body, and consultation with legal counsel employed and retained by a public body specific to legal matters requiring the provisional legal advice of such counsel pursuant to Section 2.2, 3711A7. One, council speaker policy. Two, Second Amendment Sanctuary City Resolution. Public contract, discussion of the award of public contract involving the expenditures of funds and discussion for terms or scope of such contract where the discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiation strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2, 3711A29, TCC Hotel. Publicly held property discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property, public purpose, or disposition of publicly held property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiation strategy of public body pursuant to 2.2, 3711A3, Rose Hall District, Bayside District. Personal matters, discussion, considerations, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, dispossessing or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2, 37A1. Council appointments, council boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees. Do I have a motion?
Hold on a second.
Okay.
Mr. Jones? Mr. Jones?